It's all in the city much of the place. We just made our reservations for the Riverboat Troop. We're doing the trip to the market on the line. Good biking. No. We're excited. We're excited. We're starting in the turn, Switzerland and England here. Oh, wow. Yeah. Andy really wants to do green packs, and I've heard green packs is amazing. That would be great to do with the first. Jennifer asked me about.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. I would like, it is 6:00 PM. I would like to call the May 21st Committee of the Whole meeting to order. As with all committee meetings, first of all, please silence or turn your cell phones to mute, which I need to do that myself. Also, there will be no questions. No, there will be. This isn't a work session, is it? So we will have public input if wanted. So Mayor, would you like, you or Robin, or both like to start with an overview and review of the budget?
Mr. Chairman, can I read the item first?
That would be a great idea.
I guess I should have made you a cheat sheet, huh?
Yeah, you should have made me a cheat sheet. No, we only had one item, so I was just moving on.
Item number 10, ordinance second reading appropriating monies for the City of Cheyenne for the various purposes in conducting the municipal government of said city and fixing the amount of general and special taxes as part of the revenue required to meet the said appropriation, all for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending July, or excuse me, June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. All right, Mayor and Treasurer Lockman.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, we are on the home stretch for our fiscal 2026 budget. I know the work sessions take a lot of your time, and I appreciate your attending and the great questions that you asked of all of our departments. Before you and for your review is a balanced budget of $74,417,876, up 3.8% or $2,770,000 from this time last year. The annexing of our North Range Business Park increased revenues and made up for the revenue we lost with the recent legislation reducing property taxes. Unfortunately, the recent residential property tax legislation reduced our revenues by $1,775,000, and I still view this as an opportunity lost. In the past four years, we have annexed new business parks that resulted in an additional 4,637 acres or increased our city, at the size of our city, by 18%. We should be adding to our public safety staffing. We made steady progress over the last four years in both our police and fire department staffing, but this pause will make future efforts to keep up more difficult. Our top revenue sources are sales taxes, franchise fees, property taxes, direct distribution from the state of Wyoming, building permits, historic horse racing, federal mineral royalties, severance taxes, vehicle taxes, and gas taxes. The biggest changes in our revenues are gas and electric franchise fees growing by $2, 600,000 or up 48%, and building permits by $710,000 or 31%. Weaknesses in our revenue stream include sales tax projections. We project will be down 900, just over $900,000 or 3.65%. Cable franchise fees will be down by $104,000, and the lottery by $100,000. Expenses are headlined by wages and benefits, almost 72%, capital projects, fuel, fleet and labor, support agencies, utilities, professional services, our computer services, transfers to the Civic Center, Fridays on the Plaza, the Ison Event Center, and our transit match, property and liability insurance and supplies. This budget includes 451.1 FTEs, a decrease of .3 compared to our current levels. This budget does include one new position, a prosecutor in the city attorney's office. The office currently has two prosecutors handling about 6,000 cases a year. This volume is unmanageable. The office will still be exceptionally busy, but with this hire, much more manageable. I would like to take a minute to discuss our employees and the recent efforts passed by the governing body to bring our employees' compensation into the competitive pay ranges. A year ago, our human resources department hired employers' council to do a compensation study. The study showed that we had a number of employees that had fallen completely out of their pay bands. A larger number that had fallen so far in their pay bands is to longer be competitively paid, and executive staff compensation that was woefully behind their peers. I decided that we needed to delay the implementation of these raises due to the upcoming legislative session where we were projected the legislature would cut our revenues. But after the session, we analyzed the impact of the property tax cuts, and we felt we could financially afford to bring staff salaries into their proper pay bands. As our employees gain experience and become more efficient, they're able to take on more responsibilities. They curate a specific set of skills specific to our city, and when they leave, it's difficult, if not impossible, to find someone that can match that same skill set. And honestly, I felt like we couldn't afford not to do our salaries as we're facing losing great staff members. What I learned in the process is when we hired the replacements, it had to be at the higher salaries contemplated in the salary study, and we were losing years of institutional knowledge. We found that the offers we made at existing salaries were not enough to get applicants to take the jobs. I also understand that the executive salaries have caused a few members of the City Council some consternation. We have not looked at executive compensation for a few years, and I asked the employee council to include them this time. My concern was that our neighbors to the south were recruiting our leadership. I also realized that comparing our team's compensation with Colorado would be criticized due to the unequal way our municipalities are funded. So we looked at the other large communities in Wyoming, Rock Springs, Laramie, Gillette, and Casper, to see how our executive staff compensation compared. And that comparison showed that our team was undercompensated. The budget reappropriation we approved over a month ago included bringing our executive staff not to the average of the other communities, but to a level below average, but that compensated them much more competitively. We have given our employees and the executive staff increased compensation and is much improved, appreciated, excuse me, by our employees. And I know it has prevented some employees from leaving employment within our city. One cautionary note I would like to give, we are blessed that we received a safer grant that allowed the city to hire nine additional firefighters. The grant paid for their training, salaries, and benefits for three years. The grant will run out in our next fiscal year, and the $1 million salaries will have to be added to our 2027 general fund budget. Robin and I discussed making a cost of living increase in this budget, but we decided to wait until January to see how our revenue projections were going. We know the legislature is going to again look at reducing property taxes, and with the safer grant, we wanted to be conservative. The cardinal rule of revenue budgeting is to use reoccurring revenues on reoccurring expenses, and one-time and unpredictable revenues being used for one-time expenses. And we've tried to follow those when creating this year's budget. We've been working on the budget for more than four months now, and many of your departments have been working on it much longer to prepare their budgets. I know you know this, but I want to publicly thank our departments for their hard work in getting their budgets ready for your review and for the great job they did during the work sessions over the past couple of weeks. And I know thanks you is not enough for our treasurer and her team. Rob and Brendan Amber have spent untold hours preparing the budget through every step of the process, and I believe the budget book they put together gets better every year, and I find the information very helpful. Again, complimenting or complicating their time in this was preparation for the Open Gov conversation, conversion. I'm really hopeful that that'll be done by the time we get here next year. We're really close. Mr. President, you have a budget, balanced budget. Your departments have worked so hard to prepare. We stand ready to answer any questions you have or the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Treasurer Lockman, do you care to add anything?
Mr. President, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, from the council members, any questions for the mayor or the treasurer before we get started? Okay, then I would like to just start on page 99 and go through departments since we have everybody here, and if there's no, we'll just keep on moving until somebody may have a question. So the first one is City Council. Does any of you have any questions on our budget? Probably the biggest change there is we have increased the ward discretionary funds, as you see. Hearing no questions. Any questions on the mayor's budget? Sorry, didn't hear you.
That's okay.
Councilwoman Aldridge.
President Rennie, I did want to know on page 99, where we have health insurance listed, I would like to know how many employees that covers. I know that that's not just our regular employee, that that includes, I believe, members of the council as well. So I'm just wondering if we have a number of people that are included in that figure on page 99.
Jennifer, do you happen to know that, or does, I see HR directors here, can either of you answer that question?
Mr. President.
Robin, can you answer that question?
Actually, I'm gonna pitch it over to Brandon Morrow, please.
Okay. Deputy Director.
Give me just a minute. There are six staff with health insurance.
So that would mean five council members and Jennifer, correct? All right, thank you. Councilwoman, any other?
President Rennie, are we going to work motions as we go through these, or would you like those to all wait till the end?
I think let's get the questions out of the way and then wait till the end if we could.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on the council budget?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Escobal.
On the discretionary, that $5,000, is that what we use for company picnics and Christmas parties and what other events do we have?
Jennifer, can you answer that?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Escobal, that general discretionary is for the employee picnic, since you guys actually host the employee picnic.
Has that been sufficient? Mr. Chair, through you with the inflation and...
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Escobal, we split some of the costs with HR, so I believe that HR put in a little extra in their discretionary to cover that this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Kylie, does, I presume, I understand Councilman White's online is, is Councilman Layborn as well? No, just Councilman. Does Councilman White have any questions before we move on?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions on the City Council, on to the mayor's budget. Questions on the mayor's budget? Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you for professional development. Just curious why it went up to $40,000 this year.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Moody. Sir, we have added employees in that office, and we need the ability to be able to send them to the conferences and the different trainings necessary for their jobs.
Thank you.
Further questions for the mayor? Mr. Escobal, you have your light on.
When we hired, Mr. Chair through you to the mayor, a project manager, I don't know if we had different ideas of exactly what that position was going to do, and we have any way to measure the costs of having that position to outcomes?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Escobal, you know, I think we can find outcomes. I was just going through the last time we met and looking at some of the different projects that we're working on currently, and maybe I could just read a few of those to you. We have the rail cars. He took on responsibility for much of this. The abatement is completed, the exterior restoration is out for bid, and he's coordinating with Union Pacific and our vendors to get the transportation for the cars when that work is done, so we can put them on site. And I believe that date is April 1st of 2026, if I remember correctly. The pump house, the hazardous material testing was completed, the internal abatement is now completed, the restoration design with TDSI, we had the work session, and he managed that process. Plus, he's also over there, seems like every week or so, running homeless people out of that building, backed up by one of our police officers. We had a council goal on the Belvoir to bring energy. He wrote letters to energy companies, and so far, we've had two meetings with those companies trying to find someone interested in helping develop the eastern end of the Belvoir Ranch and provide some additional revenues for the community. Downtown parking has been something that's been really on our minds. Maximizing parking downtown is, I think, one of all of our goals. He went out and found WH Smith as a design contractor, and we've signed that contract. And so they're going to do a study to how to maximize parking downtown, and he'll manage that project. We'll hopefully have that back here in the not-too-distant future, and then he'll manage the striping or the delineation of each of the parking spaces downtown. We had a study for EV charging stations, and we met with lots of different players in that game, and also put in, I can't remember how many different grants, to see if we couldn't improve the EV charging of our community. That came around when we got a letter from a guy in California who drove his non-Tesla EV to Cheyenne, had to have it towed to Fort Collins because we didn't have a charger. And so to rectify that, we put Paul on that. We seem like we've got, I think the private sector has addressed that issue out in front of Target and other places. Now we have the kinds of chargers necessary for that, but that was a project we had and worked on. Old Sadie, the hazardous materials testing is now completed. The restoration bid is in the engineering for review, and he's coordinating with the Union Pacific to figure out the best and the most safest way to pick old Sadie up and move her to the area by the depot. He's also helping coordinate Big Boy. The Union Pacific has a need of a couple of the parts that we have on Big Boy, and so with Ed Dickens, we're working on trying to figure out how to get Big Boy moved out of the park to the steam plant where they can work on the parts that they need, then help us with getting it ready to go, and then placing it someplace in the downtown with UP helping us with the transportation of that. So he's working on that project. We're looking for additional parking downtown, and one of the projects he's worked on is the Eagles parking lot. They have a parking lot across from the Eagles that's not being used, and so he's been working getting the designs, and that's done, and then working with the Eagles Lodge to see if maybe we could cooperate with them or collaborate with them to create a parking area that would be good for their patrons in the evening, but maybe for our businesses during the day. Pronghorn Crossing is the Habitat for Humanity project that is on Story Boulevard, and so he helped collaborate with that process. He's also working on the grant reimbursements, the Davis Bacon payroll discussions that we have to have, so all of those types of things to make sure that that project happens on time. And again, we should be doing the sewer sometime this summer, and then next year Habitat will be building the 12 units on that site. It will be the largest build in Habitat's history. And then he's assisting with negotiations with the Game and Fish on the Belvoir Ranch One of the big questions we have is when we get those trails opened, you know, what kind of hunting are we going to allow? Rifle hunting or bow and arrow hunting or hunting at all? So he's been integral in some of those conversations with those folks. And then the last thing that I wrote down was, he has a technology background, and one of the things that I think we have in the need of in the city is some conference rooms that have the ability to do remote meetings, teams meetings, and things like that. And so if you come into my conference room now, you'll see a new system in there that is, I guess, Mr. Chairman, you've used, I don't know if anybody else has, but it's amazing. And so we're working on doing that same thing in a couple of the other conference rooms to help the employee experience when they're meeting electronically. So there's just a few of the things that he's been working on over this last year.
Councilman?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair through you. Let's go, same question with the chief of staff position.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President, through you to Mr. Escobal, that has been, I would consider a wonderful relationship. Our chief of staff has a master's in public administration that trained her on the kind of work that we do here in the city. She has experience in city council, as county commissioner, working for the Downtown Development Authority, working for the animal shelter. So she's got a lot of really good local Cheyenne experience that I think has come in really handy. I think the biggest benefit I would tell you that I see is her ability to work day-to-day with the departments has freed me up to be able to do some of the larger picture items that I've been wanting to work on, like, just a perfect example was last Friday, meeting with leads and learning that they had a need for warehouse space so they could bring manufacturers from Colorado to Wyoming, but the warehouses that we have in Cheyenne are more expensive than the Denver warehouses, and what could we do about that? Well, I was able to have a couple of meetings, and I sent folks to Rochelle that I think can help with that problem, and we could get those manufacturing companies to move to Cheyenne and to Wyoming to bring those quality manufacturing jobs to our community. So I would tell you that she is busy day-to-day, and she's handling a lot of those things, and it's giving us the ability to handle more things, if that makes sense.
Councilman Escobal, you finished? Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, then moving on to the attorney. Any questions in regard to the city attorney? Hearing none? Can you keep moving? Human Resources, questions for Mr. House, Director House? Councilwoman Aldridge.
President Rennie, through you. I would just like to revisit the events and activities that we have. In this budget, we have increased that by $1,000 to $15,500. I'm guessing that $1,000 may be to help offset that overage for the employee picnic. I guess I'm just wondering and curious about if, when we talk about using taxpayer dollars, if there is any guideline for allowable expenses for what that can be used for? When I work in federal grants, paying for things like activities or meals or things other than for professional development and travel MINE would be non-allowable. And so how do we justify using tax dollars for entertainment and meals for our employees?
Director.
Here you go, Mr. Chair. Most of the $1,000 additional cost that strictly just for the food items, which includes, Jennifer mentioned, the summer picnic, and then the post-holiday luncheon that we provide that Culvers has been doing for years. Most of the funding that we do through the bowling tournament, the golf tournament, it's all neutral, there's no money. It's the money that we take for memberships that goes out to the prize money, so there's no money exchanges for that. So it's really, you're looking at the Christmas party, summer picnic, and the post-holiday luncheon is where these funds come from.
Councilwoman?
As a follow-up, President Rennie, I was under, I guess, probably erroneously evidently, I was under the impression that the bowling tournament and the golf tournament generated revenue that helped to offset expenses for employee events, but that's not the case.
Director.
Through you, sir. That's true. That just, the bowling, golf, the money that comes in goes out to the prize money and to pay for the golfing venue, the parks grounds, wherever, those type of things.
Thank you.
Correct.
Mr. President, can I add something?
Treasurer.
There's no federal grant dollars used for any of those costs for the picnic, and it complies with our purchasing policy, which complies with state statute.
Thank you. That was really my question was, President Rennie, through you, is if there was state guidance that dictated how city taxpayer dollars could be funded or could be allocated? Thank you.
Thank you for that answer, Treasurer Lockman. Any other questions for Human Resources? Thank you, Director. Is there anybody here from municipal court in case there are questions? I guess first thing is, do we have any questions in regard to the municipal court? Okay, moving on. Any questions in regard to youth alternatives? Okay, building risk and nuisance. See, Director Fountain is here. Any questions for Director Fountain? Hearing none. IT. Any questions in regard to animal control? Okay, next page, city clerk. Questions for our city clerk? Thank you. Public Works. Start with administration. Any questions there? Traffic Division. Facilities Maintenance. Street and Alley. Okay, good. You got off easy. All right, questions in Police Administration. Police Patrol. Parking. Okay, moving on to Fire. Fire Administration. Fire Support. Fire Prevention. Fire Operations. And Emergency Medical. Any questions for Community Rec and Events? I know they have several divisions. Any questions on any of them?
One, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Escobal.
When we were going over this budget, Director had said that there was no funding source for our parking lots. Do we have any idea about exactly how much money would we need to fund a parking lot paving program for facilities?
Director Sanchez, do you have an answer? That was really my question was, President Rennie through you, is if there was state guidance that dictated how city taxpayer dollars could be funded or could be allocated? Thank you.
Thank you for that answer, Treasurer Lockman. Any other questions for human resources? Thank you, Director. I don't, is there anybody here from municipal court in case there are questions? I guess first thing is, do we have any questions in regard to the municipal court? Okay, moving on. Any questions in regard to youth alternatives? Okay, building risk and nuisance. See Director Fountain is here. Any questions for Director Fountain? Hearing none? Any questions in regard to animal control? Okay, next page, city clerk. Questions for our city clerk? Thank you, Public Works. Start with administration. Any questions there? Traffic Division? Facilities Maintenance? Street and Alley? Okay, good. You got off easy. All right, questions in police administration? Police patrol? Okay, moving on to fire. Fire administration? Fire support? Fire prevention? Fire operations? And emergency medical? Any questions for community wreck and events? I know they have several divisions. Any questions on any of them?
One, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Escobell?
When we were going over this budget, Director had said that there was no funding source for our parking lots. In an, do we have any idea about exactly how much money would we need to fund a parking lot paving program for facilities?
Director Sanchez, do you have an answer?
Mr. Chair, Jason Sanchez, Community Wreck and Events. I do not have a ballpark estimate for our parking lot needs, but I could work with our city engineer and see if we could come up with a cost estimate. It would be, in my opinion, astronomical at this point.
Did, follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
During your budget, how many parking lots were there? Did you say, or did you give us this?
Mr. Chair through you. I don't believe I gave a number, but I believe it's around 46 acres of parking lot.
Okay. Forty-six acres.
Follow-up, Director Sanchez, how many of those are unpaved? I know the one of them at North Park is.
Mr. Chair through you. One part of North Park is unpaved, a section at Prairie View is unpaved, and then our maintenance facility off of Yellowstone is unpaved.
Thank you, Director. Any further questions for Director Sanchez on any of his?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie through you. I'm just wondering if, as you're getting a number from engineering, if we might look at the number for all parking lots versus those that are currently paved that need to be, would need to be redone? Do you know what I'm saying? Not doing new stuff, but just maintaining what we have?
Director, I presume you can, will get us that information at some point?
Mr. Chair through you, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Sanchez while he's up here?
Mr. Chair through you.
Councilman Escobell?
Just to note that, you know, when we earmarked lottery funds, and that has decreased, it, I don't know, probably because more people are using, going to historic horse racing is going to play a lottery. When you look at those numbers on historic horse racing, that really, what's it making, like 4% of our budget now on revenue side?
I didn't think that way.
Somewhere in the front.
That's about right, but it...
Thank you, Director. Engineering, any questions on engineering? Questions in regard to finance for Treasurer Lockman? Okay. Questions for planning development, which includes DDA?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Emmons?
Mr. President, I do have a question on the professional services for this budget. Does that, that $250,000, does that include work for DDA also or just for the Planning and Development Department, Division?
If I recall from their report, that was for an update to city, mayor, help me out here, marketing? City branding?
Charles is on, online, we'll just...
Okay. Director Bloom, can you add? That was a one-time item, if I remember.
Yes, Council President, through you to Dr. Emmons. Yes, that is a one-time item. That was for the community character plan update of Plan Cheyenne. To answer the question regarding, is it eligible to be utilized for DDA funding of projects? The answer is no. That'd be a separate item. That's under the DDA fund.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Councilwoman?
I do have one.
Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie through you. I'm just curious as to the character plan update, if that is actually a requirement by any of our state or federal partners, or if that is just something that we would like to be able to do?
Director?
Mr. President, through you to Dr. Aldrich. Under state statute is required that communities do have a master plan in the state of Wyoming. This plan was developed in 2014, and it does have direct conflicts with our transportation element, which is the Connect 2045 Plan and Connect 2050. And it also has conflicts with the recently adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Although it is not necessarily required, it would be best practice to update this at the same time. So the direct answer is no, it is not required, but it would definitely align the other plans that are, that are in place and one plan that is required due to federal funding, and that is that transportation plan.
Councilwoman?
Follow-up, President Rennie through you. Would, is there a feasibility to, because there's nothing that requires us to update it except our desire to align it. So would it be possible to update the transportation piece and perhaps the Parks and Rec piece without redoing the entire plan and modularize it?
Director?
Mr. President, through you to Dr. Aldrich. There could be the ability for staff to undertake amendments to remove the conflicting elements. The only problem that we would have regarding that is staff time to comb through that document to make those changes. But prior to the next committee of the whole meeting, I can get the information on exactly what that would entail, so we could have a good, solid estimate on time and what the needs are.
Thank you.
Councilman Escobell?
Mr. Chair through you. Director, under the grant match, there's 2,000 there in either the planning and development budget or the DDA budget. If you have any federal grants that we've procured over the last year?
Director Bloom?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Escobell. Yes, with our Historic Preservation Board, we have certified local government grants that often do move forward. Those are passed through the State Historic Preservation Office. Presently, we have two CLG, well, we have three CLG grants that are active. One is regarding structural analysis of the Masonic Temple. That is being funded by matching funds from the Masons. We also have a CLG grant that is active right now for nomination of the old airport terminal as to be on the National Register Historic District. And we also have another CLG grant that is active for research regarding Black History of Cheyenne. In addition, we have CLG grants that are federal pass-through dollars that are in place for training that we send our Historic Preservation Board members to annually.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair, Director, anything in the Downtown Development Authority for
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Escobell. The DDA has proposed two grants for outside agency funding for their program. One of those is $5,000 through Laramie County, which is a direct distribution to support the CIG program. I believe the other one is through the Laramie County Economic Development Joint Powers Board, which it has historically been 20,000. I believe we've increased that request to $30,000 to support specific programs in the
Councilman?
One final question. Under the, in the DDA budget for regular employee, the job description, when we filled that position was to administer the Wyoming Main Street program? How's that position been reclassified?
Director Bloom?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Escobell. That position has been reclassified to a Downtown Development Authority Office Coordinator position. The participation in the Wyoming Main Street program ended in February of this year, at the end of February. So that transition has recently occurred, and that is likely a title that we can update in the budget. I'll talk to Treasurer Lockman about getting that title updated.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Aldrich? Nope, all right. I do have one question, going back to the planning and development on, since Councilman Escobell brought up. The $2,000 grant match, is that even enough to secure much in the way of grant, grants? It seems like a fairly small amount for some of the grants we apply for.
Mr. President, through to the council. Yes, it is a relatively low amount, but with the grants that we, they're historically used through that program, which are the CLG grants, most of the match is funded by in-lu time, so staff time benefits. In the event there is a shortfall, then we would default to using that grant match amount. So it has proved to be adequate.
Thank you, Director. All right. No other questions for planning and development? On miscellaneous, any questions in there? I don't even know who we asked on that one. Looks like it's Treasurer Lockman. Any questions for Treasurer Lockman on miscellaneous? Questions in regard to special projects? Or community support? Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie through you. I just wanted to say, in looking at the list of the community supports that we have been given and knowing the services that are provided, I think that we would all agree that the amount of money that we are contributing by no means covers all of their cost. When we look at, you know, the $100,000 for leads and all, very few of these had any type of an increase. Our participation in the Emergency Management Agency, City County Health Department, the County GIS support that we receive, the Alcohol Receiving Center, the Symphony Youth Concerts, the Downtown Development Authority, which we contribute and have contributed historically, but are no longer doing it through this mechanism. The Laramie County Senior Center, the Animal Shelter, Safe Harbor, and Arch Cheyenne, I think we get an amazing return on our investment in those programs. And I'm thankful that our funding is allowing us to be able to hopefully continue that support for the services that they provide in our community. Very, very different. I don't see any redundancy in that list, but I think that all very important in their own right. So I just want to give our nonprofit partners and other agencies that contribute, shout out for the work that they do every single day on the limited funds that we're able to contribute.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving on, we have, I guess I'm going to jump to our enterprise funds next, which is solid waste, civic center, ice and events, and then surface water, which is barely beginning. Any questions on any of those items in our enterprise funds? Okay. And then I'd hate to feel the, I'd hate to have, I don't think we have it on our book, but I'd hate to have the representatives from Board of Public Utilities left out since they showed up tonight. So are there any questions in regard to the board's budget? Okay. Then, and any other funds, any other questions regard to any other items in our budget book? Seeing none, then I need a motion. So then we can, I know, Councilwoman, you wanted to maybe propose some amendments, but I needed a motion first.
Mr. President, can we offer a public comment?
A public comment, of course. We can. Trying to move it along. All right. So is there any public comment on the item before us, which is next year's budget? Any public comment from in the room? Good evening. Would you press the button so the green light comes on and identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, thank you. Erin LeBlanc, the Director of the Laramie County Senior Center. So Laramie, sorry, I'll move this forward. Laramie County Senior Services assists seniors and families in our community, not only with activities and our nutrition program services, but with resources and referrals. We offer older adults a variety of activities, both for the body and the mind. We receive calls on a daily basis from seniors themselves or an adult child looking to assist with the next stages after the loss of a spouse, retirement, or just needing a change and a place to stay active. Our medical loan closet is known throughout the community, and I know from personal experience that when an individual takes a class at CRMC for an orthopedic replacement surgery, our name appears right at the top of the list on who to contact to borrow wheelchair, walker, or other equipment devices. We average over 90 items a month loaned out at no cost. And even though at this time, we know it's a little bit of a struggle with the lack of movement happening or appearing to happen on the surface with the new senior center, we know many things are happening behind the scenes. But my staff and I are filtering calls and unfortunately negative comments every single day. And we can do, we continue to do business as usual, staying focused on the needs and requests of our patrons. We are doing more activities today and serving more meals today than we have in many years. In fact, we have added many activities in just this year alone with mahjong, which started in February and has grown to five tables already with players. Pottery and art classes. We've also began hosting a Veterans Parkinson's Group, which meets four days a week through the VA, as well as a Veterans Billiard Group, and currently planning our fifth annual Age Well Conference. The visibility for the Laramie County Senior Center has increased since the Sixpenny Award and the building of our new senior activity center. We are seeing more seniors coming in through our doors for meals, socialization, information, assistance, and referrals. We have received an outpouring from seniors looking forward to attending classes or having lunch once we occupy the new senior activity center. We have also received an outpouring of businesses who want to teach a class at the new senior activity center to enhance the lives of our older adults. Our growth in Laramie County is long overdue, and with the expansion of the new senior center, we feel that will be achieved. Wyoming senior population is rapidly growing, driving a substantial increase in demand for services. And the Laramie County Senior Center is proud to offer services and meet the needs of our older adults. And we appreciate the city's continued support in helping serve seniors in Laramie County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Director LeBlanc? Mr. Roy Bowhead, yes?
No, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie through you. I just wanted to remind my colleagues that those types of activities are exactly what the Parks and Rec Master Plan talked about, that we should be providing for people in our community that are looking for activities that aren't not necessarily outdoors nor typically associated with parks. And so thank you for the service that you provide.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Moody?
Thank you, ma'am. Just a quick question. Would you say that about, what percent are like at the poverty level that use these services?
We definitely serve, we serve all population of all incomes. I mean, I would say we have a small population of lower income individuals with our connection right now currently to the Housing Authority building next to us. Of course, that will change when we move to the new senior activity center, yes.
Any further?
Thank you.
Does Councilman White have a question? Councilman White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Ms. LeBlanc. Erin, can you give us, we've been inquiring about it for quite some time now. Can you give us a status update on the completion of the new building? I know lots of folks have been waiting a while on that.
Mr. President, through you. Thank you. No current update on that. I know that Cheyenne Housing Authority, HUD, Laramie County, and the City of Cheyenne are working very hard on getting us into the new building and occupy the building. And I, we just continue to say, we are very close.
Councilman White?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Mr. President, we have Brittany Tennant on line.
Okay, if we, all right. No, that's all right. Brittany, if you're ready.
You can see behind me.
I know, I know. I know. We'll go to the Director of the Animal Shelter. Brittany?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I appreciate it very much.
I appreciate it very much. Yeah, Brittany Tennant from the Cheyenne Animal Shelter. And I just wanted to pop on here this evening and thank Dr. Aldrich for her role as our liaison to the council. I think that she's become not only a great conduit of information between the council and the shelter, but she has actually served her role as a voting board member to the shelter very well. I've come to rely on her both for expertise, guidance, and friendship. And I just wanted to make sure that I was able to say that to this body and to the public how much we appreciate Dr. Aldrich for her work. In addition to that, our relationship with the city seems to be going pretty well. The Animal Shelter continues to deliver on the quarterly reports as requested by this council in our current contract. I haven't had any feedback on those reports or any complaints about them for the last several of years, so I hope that that means that we are satisfied with the service. I also wanted to just acknowledge Director Fountain and his animal control officers. We find working with that team of people to be quite a nice working relationship. And I think that we, together over the last couple of years, have found really a nice stride in serving the community of Cheyenne. And the Animal Shelter is very grateful to be able to be trusted with the public service of sheltering these animals. And I think that the way that things have evolved over the last couple of years has really started to demonstrate a new way forward for our community and for the community's pets. So just like all of you, the shelter is continuing to see increased demand for services, and we are doing what we can to keep up with that demand. But we're grateful to be here, and we're grateful to be included in this year's budget and to be working with the folks on your side of things that are doing good work. And I just wanted to acknowledge their work for us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Tennant. Any questions from the council? Thank you. All right, let's go back to the room. Public comment.
Hi, my name is Heidi McNeil. I'm the Vice President of Residential Services for Volunteers of America, and I just wanted to come and express my gratitude and thank you for your comments and your continued support for those of you that were able to come into our new building, that we've just recently been able to expand our care to women for residential services as well. And as much as you say that it's not much, it's more than you think it is. I think that we've had a real opportunity to impact the recovery community and those that live in addiction in our community and really reduce that and reduce recidivism. So I thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McNeil? Councilman White? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am Casey Mullins, Deputy Director for Public Health and the Director of Nursing. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss our budget today. Our budget has been carefully developed to ensure the continued delivery of essential public health services to our community. A foundational element of our operational funding for costs not covered by state contracts, grades, grants, or internal revenue is through a memorandum of understanding between the City of Cheyenne and Laramie County. This MOU clearly stipulates a shared funding responsibility between the City of Cheyenne at 55% and Laramie County at the remaining 45%. Within our budget, the city funding represents 19% of our overall budget, overall operating budget. We are pleased to report that this budget for the fiscal year '26 is $112,000 less than the previous fiscal year. This reflects our continued efforts towards fiscal prudency and efficiency. The current request for city funds allocated toward the shared operational costs under the MOU is higher than in previous budget requests. This 9% increase is not arbitrary, but rather a necessary step to ensure the city's contributions accurately reflect the 55% split stipulated in the memorandum of understanding. As reflected in the city's budget, page 178, you will see the city's funding request, our request for funding has been flat since 2023. It is pertinent to acknowledge that the previous fiscal cycles, Laramie County's contribution at times exceeded the agreed upon 45 split. While we appreciate this support, the proposed budget brings the contributions into alignment terms of the MOU. We believe the budget responsibly allocates resources to protect and promote the health of all Laramie County residents. We appreciate your ongoing support for our mission and our organization.
Any questions? Questions? Thank you, Casey. Nice to see you again. Further public comment? Public comment? Any comment online? Okay, we've exhausted public comment. Now, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Roy Ball, second by Seiggrave. Discussion. Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Councilwoman Aldrich.
President Renee, I would like to move to amend. And I'll just start with the first one here, the two, I wrote this down here. I would like to move to amend on page 133, under the, what is currently found of $294,622. Under the Police Department Parking Division, I would move to, my motion is to move that to the Compliance Department for a new parking division to be established under compliance.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Aldrich, second by Moody, to move the parking division out of the Police Department and into compliance. Councilwoman Aldrich, would you please explain the rationale for your motion?
Thank you, President Renee. My understanding, and before my time on council, my understanding is that the parking division was not in the Police Department. Over the last few months, I've had a conversation with our police chief, I've had conversations with our compliance director. The Compliance Department really works to make sure that people are in compliance. We've said repeatedly that parking is not about fundraising, but it's about compliance. And it seems to me that that would be the appropriate place for us to have our parking division and to transfer those funds so that that could be established under Director Fountain's direction.
Further discussion? Mr. Moody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. And I want to concur. One of our goals is to lessen a lot of the traffic incidents and lower some other stats. You know, our crime rate's down, but some other areas were maybe stagnant, and this will free up time for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other? Councilman Seiggrave.
Mr. President, I guess I would like to expand on this a little bit. Are we transferring those employees that are currently a part of the Police Department to compliance? Would that go with it?
Councilwoman?
And if so, how does that help us?
Councilwoman?
Thank you, President Renee. Those employees at this time, my understanding is that budget and those employees would be moved just to that new department. And I'm not sure that, when you say it helps us, that it's a financial help, but it aligns our budgeting with the more appropriate division.
Mr. President.
Councilman Seiggrave.
Councilman Moody just indicated that by doing this, it would free up more traffic control. I'm trying to figure out how that's going to happen. Is there an explanation for that?
Does the maker of the motion have an explanation?
Councilman Seiggrave, I don't have an explanation for that. I don't believe that it would free up, unless it were Captain Janes or the supervisor for that parking administrator currently, I'm not sure that that would free up time for traffic control.
Mr. President, I thought Ted was, I thought Ted was the person in charge of the parking. Is it Captain Janes?
Councilwoman.
Thank you, President Renee. I don't believe that Captain Janes is his supervisor. I think Captain Janes just works with him to make sure that that division is running smoothly. But I'm sure that Chief Francisco could enlighten us.
I was going to say, Chief, can you help us out here?
Chief Francisco, Cheyenne Police Department Police Chief, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all the question back there, so.
Councilman Seiggrave, do you want to repeat?
Yes, sir. There was a discussion by Councilman Moody that by moving this out of your division to compliance, that it would free you up to do more traffic control. And I don't understand, if we're moving the people that enforce parking from one division to the other, how that frees us up to do more parking control. Is there?
Chief?
Mr. President, through you. That is correct. If the people are going with the function, then there would be no freeing up of anyone. It consists of one manager and two full-time parking control people and one part-time. So those folks would go with the function to compliance, I'm assuming, and so that would not leave anybody behind to do anything additional with us.
Mr. President.
Councilman Seiggrave.
Through you to Chief Francisco. I'm sure you'd love to get rid of this, wouldn't you? If you had your choice?
Wow.
I guess my question is, we're talking about traffic and parking downtown. Is that more of a police function or is that more of a compliance function?
Chief, your opinion?
Through you, Mr. President. Parking is a difficult thing. As you well know, folks would rather get arrested for murder than get a parking ticket, I think. And so, the problem with police and parking is it, it creates a, maybe an unnecessary conflict with the citizens we're trying to serve in a police function. So parking, it's all over the map wherever you go. Sometimes it's with the Police Department, sometimes it's its own division. I personally think, and generally, it works better if it's its own division, because it takes that conflict between law enforcement and citizens out, and it just kind of makes it its own function. That's where I come down on it. It's not that I would love to shed that responsibility, but it does create a source of conflict between the community and the Police Department that's probably unnecessary.
One final question.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Are the officers that enforce the parking, are they sworn officers? Do they have to be in order to write tickets?
I don't, they are sworn, but they are not sworn officers. They're in a special category that basically is encompassed by the ordinance covering CSOs. So they can still be sworn in by us, or, you know, the clerk's office, and we could convey those powers for them to write the tickets. They're not criminal. The tickets are not criminal, so it doesn't require a law enforcement sworn officer to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other, well, the chief's up here. Any other questions for him?
Not for the chief.
Councilwoman Emmons?
No.
Thank you, Chief. Director Fountain, do you want to weigh in on this?
Hi, Director Fountain.
I think there are questions for you.
Eric Fountain, Director of Compliance, Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't have an issue with looking at this opportunity and taking it on as we've done in the past with other opportunities. I do have one thought in that I do believe it's time, if we're going to do something like this, to take a look at the staffing that we currently have in place and look at perhaps having an opportunity for new perspectives within that opportunity. I would best bet that it'd be more of a recommendation for me for the Police Department to keep and retain the current employees they have and give me the opportunity to restaff this opportunity, taking a look at what we're trying to ultimately do here by developing a more comprehensive understanding of what we want parking to look like in downtown, and also into understanding what our downtown business partners want that to look like. Some of those relationships are very strained, and I think that they're great employees for the City of Cheyenne, but at this time, if we're going to consider an opportunity like that, I'd like to have the opportunity to staff that in a manner that would be a fresh, new start and being able to be able to deliver the thought processes that we want to put into place to be successful within parking. That'd be my only consideration. To have you please take under advisement at this time.
Questions for Director Fountain?
Mr. Chair, through you. We have a director, and we have two and a half compliance officers. The half compliance officer is he, or, excuse me, the parking officer, is he assigned somewhere else also, or is he just a part-time? Are they part-time?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Royball. We actually currently have three nuisance officers, one for each ward. We did that through some attrition opportunities, and you guys afforded for one within the budget. So we have three nuisance officers, and then we have one vagrancy that works with the unhomed population within the community, and that's what serves the nuisance side of the operation. In terms of safety, we have two safety officers. One was a position that we had in the past that we filled, and then through attrition again, we developed another safety officer in order to get us to where we want to be within the safety culture. So to answer, it's actually those numbers, sir.
Okay. And then just as a follow-up on the parking, we have, again, a director, or, excuse me, a manager of parking, two full-time and a part-time. Would you imagine that we would need a manager for that division, or would you be able to fold the three plus the half into?
Director.
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, Councilman Royball, I don't know what it's going to take. What I know is this, there's been a lot of money invested in a comprehensive plan that we want to implement in our downtown. We've taken a lot of encouragement with CRE in getting lighting and a brighter opportunity and getting security devices put into place, and the Police Department has spent a significant amount of time in creating what should be a deliverable opportunity when having conversations about parking. What I think needs to happen is, we need to take a look at, what do we want parking to look like? Post some positions, let these folks apply, and let's attract and retain some talent that can communicate the effectiveness and the overall well-being of parking in our downtown, and then get out there and do a campaign so people understand what we really want to do with parking. I've heard a lot of conversation in my nine years of being with the City of Cheyenne in terms of, what do we want downtown parking to look like? And we have conversations that are all over the place, but we have a very well-sought, comprehensive plan, and I think that's where we need to start.
Councilwoman Emmons.
Mr. President, through you. Have you had an opportunity to think about this, or is this the first you're hearing about this proposal?
Director.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Well, it's like a lot of things that come up at budget time. I inherited an animal control about three weeks before the budget was completed, and I'm not surprised. There's been a lot of conversation about parking for a few years now, and I'm not surprised that this is a thought process behind it. What I would ask of this council is to consider a couple of things. One, the objectives that were clearly outlined within that plan. Giving that some time, massage that a little bit. Also, understand that staffing is crucial. A good, on the hearing, so when Mr. Mias has a person that comes in and wants to contest a ticket, I'm also that person that hears that. So somebody else is going to have to take that responsibility on, and we just did one of those cases. All of it is very successful in communities, and I think the chief did a great job explaining. Sometimes it's held as its own department, sometimes it's in a DDA, sometimes it's in another division like this. So to answer your question, no, I did not know this was coming, but I'm not surprised.
Councilwoman Emmons, further questions?
Mr. President, through you. So is there the potential that we could do this so that it could move after the budget is set so that we do have time for the director to be able to think about what's the best way to do this? Because, I mean, my concern is the fact that you just brought up, that you're basically adjudicating issues that you're also citing. And I'm concerned about the not crossing lines or looking inappropriate.
Director.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I guess that'd be a good question for this governing body to figure out how they wish to handle that. Again, I've only had one that I've had to overhear, oversee, I guess, if you will. There's not a lot of people that contest them. What's interesting is they just don't pay them. And it's not a surprise. I think the chief again did a great job. They'd rather die than pay a parking ticket. But they'd also do the same thing with their sanitation. If they don't want to pay for the transfer station, they just dump it in a field, and we come along and clean it up, because we care about one city, one standard. So giving it more time, again, I think the big piece would be how we attract and retain new staff, find a place for the staff that we currently have that oversee this operation and work within this operation, understand what your number one goal and priority is, clearly set that out as a goal for this council and governing body to take forward in your next session, and then we can deliver it. Time is always nice. But time is always nice, but I'm going to tell you, it's going to take time to develop it and time to deliver it and a lot of patience in between.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through you.
Director Fountain, last week in your presentation, remind me again the total number of nuisance violations you had last year. It was like 4,300?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Councilman Escabel. 3,625. At that time, we had two staff members that were handling that. We now have three.
That's my concern, Mr. Chair, is that compliance really does have a lot on their plate.
President Rennie, through you. I would like to remind my colleagues that this budget is the 2026 budget. This does give us some time to allow the planning and the process to be planned. We would, I would imagine that we would continue on as Mr. Fountain would do the planning through the 2025 year and then this would take effect in 2026. I also believe that while nuisance is, has a heavy load right now, that what we're talking about are positions that would be able to be filled that would be or be transferred, whatever that looks like, with this responsibility. So it's not that we're just adding something to the plate. Does it mean that they're going to need more support and more time? Absolutely. But I believe that this is the time to plan ahead and to allow that year to plan to make this happen.
Mr. President.
A moment, Councilman Seagrave. I think Attorney Brody keeps inching up towards the podium. I think he may like to weigh in on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Brody, City Attorney. I just wanted to also include, and the chief sort of spoke to this fact, but if the decision by the governing body is to move parking over to compliance, there's some fairly significant changes to do in the city code. For example, we'd have to figure out how to revamp what the appeal process is because Fountain could no longer be in charge of that. The city police department is specifically identified in numerous provisions when it comes to parking enforcement. We probably have to evaluate how those officers are, I guess, authorized under city code because they wouldn't be community service officers necessarily under the Cheyenne Police Department any longer. So those are all, I think, things to take into consideration that will have to be part and parcel of that shift if that's what the governing body wants to do.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for our attorney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Aldridge.
Mr. Brody, through, to you, through President Rennie. Is this impossible to do?
Oh, I'm not, no, not at all.
Thank you.
It could be difficult to do in a month.
I'm not talking about a month. We're talking about that we would have a year to basically get this aligned. If we're moving the money right now, it's for 2026.
Treasurer can correct me, Mr. President, but I believe the 26 budget goes effective July 1st.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we do have a matter of?
Four months.
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
We can do it.
Five weeks. Councilman Seagrave, sorry, I cut you off there.
That was the point I was going to make. We don't have a year. We've got six weeks and to move this out of the budget now, you're going to have three extra employees on the police staff. Director Fountain indicated he would like to hire his own people. That could take, I don't know. You have to post it and I just don't know how Director Fountain would be able to get up and be running and we'd have the ordinance changed by July 1st. Thank you.
President Rennie?
Councilwoman?
I would just like to ask, through you, to Director Fountain, how many weeks did you have to set up animal control and get it up and going?
Director Fountain?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Dr. Aldridge. We had about six weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Further discussion, Councilman White. Sorry, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think I'm not opposed to moving parking under compliance, but Mr. Seagrave brought up some concerns that I certainly share. And then, you know, there was also questions about housing. Where would, where would the city employee, or where would the parking employees be housed under? Would they stay at the police facility or would they come over to the city? And if they're coming over to the city, where would we put them? Because we know already that, as it currently stands, the municipal building, you know, we're full. So I think that's also another concern.
Maybe we can move down the street.
President Rennie?
I think, Councilman White, are you finished?
I am, sir.
Okay. All right. Councilman Moody was next, but he'll yield to Councilwoman Aldridge.
President Rennie, I would just mention that there might be extra space in our old offices.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Do apologize for speaking about, I honestly thought Captain James was apparently not, but I would concur with my colleague. I mean, with six weeks for animal control, that to me is a higher burden than parking, so still support this amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment? Discussion? Okay, the amendment is to move $294,622 from Parking Division into Compliance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
The opposed are Seagrave, Roybal, Emmons, and Escabel. The amendment fails?
And White.
And White, thank you. The amendment fails and before we go on to the next amendment, I've been requested that we take a brief break, so you have, you have till 7:25 and I'll adjourn then.
So nine minutes. No, eleven.
Eleven.
Your eyes are turning out.
Thank you.
You shouldn't drink so much.
I'm drinking Mountain Dew and mine aren't yellow yet.
Well, I didn't know if that was, I didn't know, is that how Marion did it when she was mayor? Was it by executive action?
It's an executive, it's an executive action.
Oh, I didn't know that she'd done it that way. Well, I didn't know that that's how it had been done in the past.
She just moved it.
The previous mayor.
I don't remember why, but she moved it.
And I've been talking with Chief Francisco and Eric about this for over six, but I was under the impression we had to wait until we could move the money.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to it. It's just kind of a timing thing and he can, like you said, he can just turn around and move those employees from this one to this one.
That's another issue. He doesn't want them. He said they can apply for it if they want, but.
Okay, well, I'll be calling you. So answer my call.
Now you have to call me back.
Oh, I haven't gotten any messages.
At least three times in a row.
You did? Today?
No.
Oh.
At least three times that I can remember.
Because I did not know that I, and I didn't have a message, a voicemail. Did you leave a voicemail?
When you see a missed call, you.
Oh.
When I get your calls, I call you.
I have to tell you, I had thirty missed calls today, so sometimes I do not see a missed call.
Michelle, people have to wait for beer when he calls me.
Well, nobody's getting beer where I'm working.
Mr. Mayor, are you concerned about size of CRE and compliance? These divisions are just getting so big.
Thank you, thank you, re-inheriting here.
How are you doing?
We're doing good. We have the first.
He can manage that.
My husband's up for the $5,000.
Yeah, soup to nuts, man.
Ours was April 30th, so. And we raised $19,000.
I just don't know what you did with the three police officers.
I think we're going to recite the [inaudible].
Three and a half, three and a half people.
We raised $70,000 and $1,000.
That's impressive.
Harold Davidson. Beautiful pickup truck. Yeah, F-100 pickup truck. Yeah. It went from $4,000.
You, Mayor, you may, if there's other amendments like this, could you identify that they could be done on a?
Not that much. Thank you.
Administrative. Yeah. I understand.
Sorry, I did not know administratively, so.
Do you have any other amendments?
Oh, I have a whole sheet, but none of them like that. That is the biggest.
Okay.
So I have a whole sheet. We'll be here a while. I do have to be working at eight o'clock in the morning though.
Not if I call a question.
You have to move it, ask the second best out of the, we're not like the legislature which just follows where it's wanted to.
Oh, you just wanted to change.
Councilwoman Emmons. Dr. Emmons. Dr. Emmons, I just want you to be sure your mic's on and I'm going to unmute the Zoom,
We're going to start. Okay, I know I said 7:25, but everybody's back and it's a little early, so we are going to reconvene. Councilwoman Aldridge.
President Rennie, I would like to move to, move $6,000 from professional development on page, I'm sorry, I would like to, on page 99, lower professional development from, to $6,000, saving $1,750. And I'll tell you where I'm going to move all this in just a minute. And then professional development on page 101, I'd like to decrease that to $25,000, thus saving $15,000. And professional development on page 103, lowering that to $6,000, saving $5,800 for a total save, savings of $20,800. And I'd like to have that added to line, sorry, on page 99, to the line for regular employee, for the city council, regular employee, as an increase in wages.
Mr. President, can you repeat that so we can?
I need a second first.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moody. Councilman, would you please run those by us again?
Professional development on page 99, which is the city council, would decrease from $7,750 to $6,000, thus creating a $1,750 savings. Page 101, the professional development would decrease from $40,000 to $25,000, giving us a $15,000 savings. The professional development on page 103 would be reduced from $11,800 to $5,000, I'm sorry, to $6,000, giving us a $5,800 savings, resulting in a total savings of $20,800 to be then put in on line, sorry, page 99, under regular employee wages, under city council division.
So you're raising that one to 79.7 approximately?
That is correct, approximately, yes.
Okay.
Mr.
Treasurer Lockman?
Mr. President, through you, to Councilwoman Aldridge, Councilwoman, excuse me. So it wouldn't go into the, there's benefits involved whenever you increase somebody's salary and so you would have to, we'd have to work that and make that work.
So I, so do I need to amend the motion, or change the motion so that would go into the regular employees and benefits, whatever that breakdown is according to our treasurer?
And then one other thing, we need to have it by department and so she's mixing departments and so we need to say, city council needs to, because you're amending the ordinance. So if you could say city council department decrease, I don't really need to know the.
Oh, I'm.
Got it.
So city council department decreased by $1,750 on the professional development line. The mayor division decreased by $15,000 on the professional development line and the city attorney decreased by $6,000 on the professional development line.
Treasurer, do you have that now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman, you want to elaborate?
This is second, need to.
No, the second, I thought Mr. Moody seconded it.
But it changed.
I need a second. Is that correct, Mr. Moody?
Second, yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay, Councilwoman.
President Rennie, in looking at the wages and the salaries and looking at the study that was done, I think that one of the challenges with the study that was done is that sometimes it's hard to find an equivalent position.
I think that one of the challenges with the study that was done is that sometimes it's hard to find an equivalent position, um, in other communities that would be similar to this position. I also think that when we, um, have an employee who has done an excellent job and, um, is doing a, providing a, a skill set that is very similar to what would be, um, akin to, for instance, a deputy city clerk. With a lot of responsibilities that are very similar to that, and I look at what we would be anticipating paying a new deputy city clerk. I find that the disparity to be disturbing, quite honestly. You'll see that a deputy, um, city clerk deputy director, um, is proposed to start at ninety-six thousand dollars a year, um, whereas our, um, employee that, uh, performs similar duties. Um, is right now at fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventeen under the proposed twenty-twenty-six budget, and that with no increase. I just find it concerning that we would, um, not have any increase built in, um, for that particular employee, so that's my justification.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, through you. Um, so the total of the three decreases was twenty-two thousand seven fifty, and then the increase to the regular employee salary is twenty-two eight hundred, is what was said.
The figure given was twenty point eight, but I think it's.
Doesn't add up.
It's seventeen fifty, fifteen thousand, twenty-eight hundred.
Oh, twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred.
Whatever, I, sorry. Uh, family consumer science teacher, not a math teacher, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman.
So, is the division attorney proposal to, for professional development to decrease it to six thousand or by six thousand?
Decrease by six thousand, I understood. Is that accurate, Councilwoman?
Yes, it, it, it is to decrease it to six thousand, from eleven thousand eight hundred to six thousand, which is fifty-eight hundred savings.
Thank you.
My understanding from the testimony given by the city attorney was that, that was, uh, professional development, um, and there are, and when I asked about that, there are two attorneys. Um, then New Orleans is where their, um, conference is being held. That would allot three thousand dollars for each attorney.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Aldridge, you finished?
I am.
Okay. Um, at this point, we're still asking questions, 'cause I need to go out to the public also, so.
Mr. President, through you, Robin, can you add those up and tell me what the total is?
It's twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I wanna go out to the public before we have discussions, so.
Just a point of information, so.
Councilman Moody.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, through you, so just a point of in, um, information, uh, ma'am, uh, treasure, so what would the, uh, increase for the regular employee salary be with that, uh, reallocation of funds?
Um, Mr. President, through you, it will be twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty, but I don't know how much of that is, goes into the regular salary and how much in benefits without time to calculate it.
Okay.
Councilman Seagrave.
Mr. President, I, my question is, I don't know enough about our H R system. Are there bans, are there salary bans within job descriptions, do those need to be adjusted as well, or are we?
Director Haas, can you, can you address Councilman Seagrave's question?
Through you, Mr. President, yes, there, there is pay grades with each position, mid, mid and max pay ranges.
And by adding twenty-two thousand plus to this job band, would that violate it?
Uh, that will, uh, that will create some, some, uh, challenges going forward, 'cause right now every single employee is paid on based on their work experience within that pay band, and when we go up and above beyond that, that, that's gonna be hard to calculate, the annual step increases that we have in place, so. That's, uh, gonna jeopardize that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Seagrave.
What type of a precedent would we be setting if we did this?
Well, through you, Mr. President, right now, we've, we just, we calculated, everybody just went through, e- every full-time employee went through this, this pay study, new pay grades, there's a hundred and twenty employees that did move up based on the pay grade. Uh, they're all, every employee is where they should be based on their work experience, this would be an exception.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions for staff in regard to this, before we have discussion, I wanna go out to public comment, so. Any public comment, which include Mr. Mayor, looks like you'd like to say something?
Mr. President, through you to the, to the committee of the hall, I am a little bit concerned about the changing of the city attorney's, um, budget. We also have prosecutors and, um, and staff that we send to, uh, the, it's the statewide municipal court conference that was included in there. Uh, we have a couple of attorneys that we send to, uh, different trainings, so when we went through those numbers, we figured that that's about what it would take, the eleven thousand eight hundred dollars to send for, and if we get with this budget, the fifth, uh, attorney to their different conferences. I don't think we can do it for the amount of money that would be left, uh, if the, if this was approved.
Okay, and I have a, um, any further public comment, any hands raised? No, okay. Um, kind of along similar lines as the mayor's point, Attorney Brody, I realize that your profession has some continuing edu, continuing education requirements that have to be met. Does this change have an impact on those?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think under the allotted amount, we could technically still meet the C L E requirements, what I think this cut would do would eliminate the ability for the city attorney's office to attend that International Municipal Lawyers Association event, um, which specializes in municipal law, so we were trying to bring a specialized knowledge into the attorney's office, but, um, with the cut, we can, um, just not take up that opportunity this year.
Thank you, any other questions for our attorney? Okay, thank you, all right, no more public comment, discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Mr. President.
Mr. Councilman Seagrave.
I certainly am sympathetic to the intent of this, I, I totally agree that we need to do some, I'm just not sure this is the right way, I'm concerned about job descriptions and comparisons from department to department. Maybe we should just be reclassifying this job. I, I'm not sure of the proper way to do it, but I do have concerns about paying someone significantly more than that band, that wage band allows. I think we set terrible precedents doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Emmens.
Mr. Chairman, through you, um, I also totally understand the process, the purpose of this and support it completely. Having been, however, um, an H R professional for many years and knowing how difficult it is to do wage comparisons and the, the wage analysis. Um, and having looked at the process and the end results of what we've done, I also am concerned that we will potentially create compression within the system, which then skews everything. It's, I always think of it as kinda like a teeter totter, that when you move one end up, the other end's gonna go down, or vice versa. Um, I do think, however, so that concerns me a lot, because it will ripple through everybody else if we do this the way we're supposed to do this. Um, but I do think that it would be worth potentially looking at job descriptions and making sure that what the position does is in the right category and the right classification, because it may be that it's in the wrong band. And then we could make that move, but not cause unintended consequences.
Councilwoman.
Uh, President Rini, through you, I'm just curious, my understanding is that, um, several years ago, prior to my coming on the council, and, um, many of us that are on the council now, uh, prior to that, that there was an effort to attach evaluations to pay raises. And there was an entire work, body of work that was done around evaluations that then never really connected to pay raises, so we've been doing cost of living increases, we've been doing these anti-compression raises. I'm not really sure, I think that our employees work really hard, and that they do, for the most part, they're doing a really good job. I would say that, as in any organization, you're going to have some that probably are not working up to their full potential, and I'm not sure that by the mechanisms we're currently using to increase wages, that we are rewarding those employees who go above and beyond. Um, the average, uh, meets expectation employee. Um, I'm very concerned that when we talk about the talent we're risking losing, or, um, people who are doing much beyond what normal jobs, um, expectations are, we have no, we have no mechanism currently, and to my knowledge, to, um, reward that behavior. And so what we end up getting is just a lot of, uh, encouraging, whether, um, consciously or subconsciously, we encourage mediocrity, and I think that that's a, a major problem with whatever this mechanism, these bans and things are that we're using currently. So I, I, maybe we need to look at our entire, um, payroll system and how we're coming up with these classifications. Uh, it's, you know, shocking when this market study gives some employees a thirty thousand dollar a year increase, I have constituents who don't even make thirty thousand dollars a year, and, you know, the, the argument is, well, maybe, you know, it, they may be being offered more to go somewhere else. Well, you know, I'm kind of, I had a constituent say to me, then maybe it's like frozen, let it go, let it go, I don't know, but we need to do something, because what was happening is we're not, we're not rewarding those individuals who consistently go above and beyond in the current system we're using. And to have an employee that gets zero dollars, or, uh, there are some that got one or three dollars, um, is almost offensive.
Councilman Royball.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, this is, I, I fully support this, and it's, it's something that we have done before, I think we did it for an employee in sanitation. Uh, Director Nemechek brought her name up in budget, and we gave a raise because of the way she went above and beyond, do you remember that? She was a sanitation manager. But.
I do not.
The, it's not something we haven't done before, so, like I say, I'm all for it, if we need to maybe postpone this amendment for two weeks so we can get the right verbiage, the right way to do it, I, I would support that.
Are you making a motion to postpone?
I would make a motion to postpone for two weeks.
I don't think so.
Um, actually, we cannot, because it goes, that means we'd have to postpone the entire budget.
Uh, Mr. President, we do have the, the calculation right now, we were able to calculate, at least, I mean.
Let me go to Councilman Royball, are you finished?
Yes.
Councilman Seagrave.
Mr. President, what options do we have? I think, I think you're hearing the intent of the council is to reward this employee, but what options are available within the system as it is today?
Treasure Lockman, do you wanna give us those figures?
Uh, yes, so the salary increase would be eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and the benefits related to that increase would be four thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars, a total of twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty.
Good job.
Thank you, Brenda.
I'm impressed. Councilman Escobal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I agree with everything I've, I've heard, and, uh, I'm not sure if this is the right amount, or if it's the right mechanism, uh, but during my, uh, term as president last year, we had the employee evaluations and had to come up with goals and outcomes. Well, one of them was the new elected official orientation, and that, uh, the two newly elected officials, uh, sitting on this dais, uh, went through a pretty rigorous orientation, and they've hit the ground running, you know, that they're like seasoned council members now. But again, I, I suppose that getting more information would be good, uh, I guess vote this down, if you wanted to, uh, look at another mechanism, or what the right amount would be. Otherwise, I would probably just vote yes on this one.
Councilman Moody.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, through you, uh, first, I wanna thank my colleague Farah in Board Three for that, um, it was a pretty intense orientation, but it was definitely worth it for me and my colleague from War Two. As said, for I support this, um, again, works very hard, I would say helped onboard, uh, my colleague and I for, uh, from War Two, so I would be supportive of it. I mean, if you look at the bands, all that, it looks pretty clear-cut, so I'm an I vote.
Councilman Seagrave.
Yes, Mr. President, I, I did ask a question, what are our options? Is there anyone here that can tell us what our options are? Thank you.
Um, Director Haas, can you try and address that, please?
Through you, Mr. President, one option we, we, that I would recommend from an H R profession, and, and Dr. Emmens mentioned that, is this individual's probably working on a job description that hasn't been revised in a number of years. Uh, I, in fact, I know there's a lot of duties aren't being captured on that, so my recommendation, for, again, from H R profession, is to revise the job description to, to reflect exactly what this position is, does, and then run it back through the market and see where it comes in at. I, I, I do agree with Dr. Aldridge, we do not have a pay-for-performance model in place, we haven't had one since the time I've been here. We have, our compensation strategy is, is not the best, but it's the best it's been in the six years. Right now, we, we're recognizing experience, and does that mean quality experience? No, that just means work experience, if they're a low performer, those managers are tasked with, uh, getting them up to a solid grade or moving them out, out of the city. So that's, that's what we're doing right now for performance, but we do not have a current pay-for-performance model, it's based on work experience, and, and to do this correctly, which is, let's get an accurate job description that really reflects the scope of work this individual's doing, or individuals.
Director, I had asked you sometime last winter if you would review that job description, 'cause I didn't think it was adequate, have, has that been done, or do I, as her, as the, as the head of that division, need to do that?
It's partially been done.
Okay. Um, can you give us maybe a time when we would see those results?
I'm also working with the individual on the job description to make sure we have everything in there, 'cause obviously I don't know what they, what that job description entail, this board probably doesn't know, who knows what they do, it's the individual in that position, so we've asked, I've been working with this individual to, let's revise the job description to accurately reflect what's in there, and then, and then I can bounce it back through and let you know some of those differences too.
Thank you, any further questions for Director Haas? Councilman. Councilman White.
I s, I see, every time I raise my hand, I see, uh, Jen raise her hand, it's kinda funny. Um, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, no real questions for Director Haas, but I would, I completely support the intent of this, but having just gone through a, uh, doing a reclassification of a staff member's job, you know, I can't just pay, uh, employees what I'd like to pay them, it has to go through the process and, uh, 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 doing, doing a re-class in order to justify the, um, the, uh, increase in wages. That's from the state perspective, I would think it's similar through, uh, a municipality perspective, and, uh, knowing what Jen does and all of the other things that, uh, that she does, that's prob, that probably aren't captured in the current, uh, description, I would think that a, a re-class and then an adjustment would probably be the correct way to approach this.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman White. Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Aldrich.
President Rennie, through you. I would just like to remind my colleagues that have been serving on the council for a while and let those know that are new to the council. When I first joined this council, we actually had one and a half employees or one employee, which was Jennifer, and an additional part-time employee that would do things like help in the sound booth and do some of these things. She has gone now for at least three years without that part-time position. And while this may not be the correct mechanism, I'm wondering if we can have a reclassification completed by June 4th.
Director Haas, is that possible?
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, that is possible. And we do have a mechanism that, outside of the protocols, every month, we have a Position Advisory Council. This is very common, bringing a revised job description. Bandwidth has changed. We take it to the committee to review, look at the new assigned pay grade, and look at the new pay grade based on where they should be and where that experience would place them. But yes, we could, we could get, we'll get it done.
President Rennie.
Thank you, Director.
If we are able to get that information, that reclassification, prior to June 4th, which I believe is our next committee of the whole for the budget hearing, then I would withdraw my motion for this evening.
Councilwoman, you cannot withdraw your motion once it's made and seconded and it belongs to the body.
And I would encourage my colleagues to vote it down. And we will come back with a new amendment once we get that reclassification, but it's not going away.
Councilwoman Emmons.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I think that that's really a good idea because I don't want to potentially undercut her either. You know, there's the potential that her salary should be higher than the $18,000, which then I understand opens a whole nother can of worms for Robin as far as where we get that from. But you know, there's a chance that we could inadvertently penalize her by not doing the process.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Escobell.
So then, all the other employees that we're thinking of doing this for as we go through budgets, do you want us just to give you a list of those people that we want reclassified so you have it by June 4th?
Are there other employees, Councilman?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Councilwoman Aldrich, do you have another comment?
I was just going to say, that's two weeks. We can do that, I'm sure. Director Haas is looking at me like, what?
Councilman Escobell, did you intend on bringing those up during these discussions or do you want to just provide your list to HR?
Oh, wait.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
The amendment fails. Councilwoman Aldrich.
President Rennie, I'm going to take a break and let somebody else make some. I have 11 on here, so we'll just let them work down the list.
So we're only through two of them? Anybody else have an amendment? Councilman Moody?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, through you. On page 117, under professional services, I would like to decrease that to $25,000 with a decrease of $10,000. And I'd like to put that $10,000 in general reserves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to remove $10,000 from the professional services line item within the County Clerk's Division and move that back into reserves. Will the maker of the motion explain his rationale?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, through you. I mean, just looking at it, I mean, I'm seeing that there's a lot of educational opportunities, but the question is, you know, we didn't really get explanation of how much each cost. So, again, it's just putting some money away. And, again, it looks like that, it used to be 22 back in 2024, and 28 went down. So I think 25 is a happy median. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, before we move on, before a point of, for my own edification, professional services is not necessarily professional development. That's usually contracted services. Am I correct? Clerk Soden, can you address this for us, please?
Mr. President, Kylie Soden, City Clerk. That is correct. Our professional development line item is separate, so that would be our contracted services.
And can you give us an example of what, in the last year, what contracted services you've had to use?
Mr. President, it would be our contracted employee. We have contracted a certain amount to pay him annually. So that would be the majority of that. And as you see from, you know, year to year, the actuals do vary. That could be based on how much, you know, he works, he doesn't work, and things like that.
So is this a part-time employee that you use that is outside the normal pay scale?
Yes.
Okay. So then if the amount is... And can you enlighten us on what, I mean, what his function is within your office?
Yes, through you. He does, he maintains our city-owned land property files.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for our city clerk? Mr. Royball.
Clerk Soden, so if we don't use the full $35,000, that reverts back to general fund?
Mr. President, through you, to Mr. Royball. Robin is nodding yes. That is correct.
Usually that's a reversion.
Good. Thank you.
So, any further questions for the city clerk? Thank you, Kylie. All right, further discussion on the motion to remove $10,000 from the professional services line item for the city clerk division? Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Ms. President, through you. In light of the information, I request everybody vote no on this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
Amendment fails. Mr. Moody, do you have another amendment?
No, this time.
Councilwoman Aldrich, back to your list.
No one else has any?
Let's knock a few of yours out.
President Rennie, through you. My understanding is that in hearing and listening to all of the budget presentations, that the municipal court asked us for an increase of $28,000 for a part-time clerk position that was not in this budget. And I just want to confirm that that is accurate, that it is not in this current budget.
Mayor.
Mr. President, through you, to Dr. Aldrich. That is correct. We looked at the amount of money that we have put into the court over the last couple of years and all the different things they've asked for. And we just honestly felt like we've given them enough resources at this time. It's time for them to work through those issues and then maybe come back at a later time.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman?
President Rennie, through you. I know that one of the things we spend a lot of time talking about is that the workload of the municipal court and their heavy load and that this would help to provide support for that heavy load. So I would like to make a motion to remove $28,000 from the Planning Department.
Which page are you on?
I'm just looking for it right now.
Okay.
Sorry. It's on page 171, from the professional services line item, which is the money that was increased for the one-time project for updating the character plan from 2014, to remove $28,000 from that fund on page 171 from the Planning and Development Department Division to be added to the Municipal Court Division for the part-time clerk position that was requested by Judge Singleton.
And which page?
That's on 107, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I say?
Treasurer Lockman.
So that money, the $250,000, is one-time money, so it needs to go to another one-time purpose, which salary would not be.
Comments, Councilwoman?
No, can I change my motion? I don't think we have a second yet.
We do not.
So I'd like to change my motion. I would like to remove the $235,000 increase from the Planning and Development Division on page 171 and let it revert back to the general fund so that we can then work on future amendments to move more money out of a general fund to recurring expenses.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilwoman Aldrich to remove $235,000 out of the professional services line item in the Planning and Development Division and move that back into the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did I get that correct?
Mr. Chair.
And seconded by Moody. Councilman Royball.
Wouldn't that be doing the same thing, taking one-time money and trying to use it for recurring expenses?
Mr. President, through you, to Councilwoman. Royball, it would be, it would go into general fund reserves, and so it's not the same thing.
It's not obligated at that point.
We're not paying anything out of it. It's just going to sit in reserves.
Okay, thank you.
The question I have for Director Blum is, I think you said that some of this was mandated or at some point will be mandated by statute? Or maybe not quite to that deadline? Is that accurate? Director?
Mr. President, members of the council, Charles, we're planning development director. Under state statute, communities are required to have a comprehensive plan. They call it a master plan. There's no requirement that it stay up-to-date. For federal funding through the MPO, we're required to update our transportation element every five years, which we've done. Right now, this plan does have some conflict with that transportation plan, notably demographics, street classifications, a couple of other items, which I'm still intending to pull together, those conflicts. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan does have some conflicts as well. But in the end, if this item is removed, it's not going to change where we've been since about 2014 with our comprehensive plan and the community plan for the city.
Thank you, Director. Councilwoman?
No.
Okay, I had your light on, so I... All right, thank you. All right, discussion on the... Mayor Collins?
Mr. President, through you, to Dr. Aldrich. I'm trying to understand the purpose. If we just don't want to fund the plan, is that the idea? Or, I'm just trying to understand, so I'm making good notes to myself here.
President Rennie, through you to...
Councilwoman?
Mayor Collins. I just find it, and have found it disconcerting over the last four and a half years, the amount of money that we spend on plans. Literally, and I've been thinking about this. If there were a way to add all of them up and go back and find all of those that we passed when I was serving on the Finance Committee over the last four years, literally millions of dollars. And when it's not something that's required and it could be done through just updating, I really struggle with spending nearly a quarter of a million dollars for one more document to, that may or may not, as we've seen through all the studies we've had done, may or may not actually ever be used. Especially if we can just update the elements. And if it's a demographic issue, that's a pretty easy update as far as demographics, as far as some sort of a plan would go. So I just think that, in light of our changing, always-changing financial landscape, that this is an expense that is, would be, I think, considered unnecessary at this time.
So while they're conferring, I have been remiss. I have not gone out to asking for any public input on this. So other than... Mayor, why don't you give some public input?
Mr. President, I have to tell you, when this first came to me, I didn't want to put it in the budget. And then when we sat down with our planning director, there was a couple of things that had to do with lot types and things like that that I thought were important. We do those in a different way than maybe a lot of other communities in our area do, and it leads to some confusion. And so the thing that really brought this to my attention and why I thought it was important was, and I'm probably not the best person to explain it, maybe the director can. But yes, there were some conflicts that needed to be fixed, but there was also something that I thought was really important that might help us with our development in the future.
Director Blum, go ahead, and then I have a follow-up question.
Mr. President, through to the council. As the mayor was mentioning there, there are a lot of other elements here. This plan is the one that establishes our land use categories, our land use plan. It also sets the policy statements that identify where we want to see the city go. So if we're looking at development code regulations, like changes in how our lot types look, best practices in subdivisions, those items, those are all actions that are related to the plan that oversees it. I did send an email after my budget presentation out to all of you, and that did include several examples of some of the outdated action statements that we do have. One of mine did point out is the fact that it recommends that we take existing housing units along arterial streets and we convert them into businesses. That is not a practice that we are looking for in the community today because that depletes the housing stock. So right now, our guiding plan says, convert those houses to commercial uses. That's where our guide is. Also, our land use plan is a little bit older and it's old-fashioned. It's really from the original plan back in 2006. And it had been lightly revised in 2014. And it calls out different activity centers and different philosophies with how zoning is put together and how subdivisions look. It really is developed in a way that support amendments to our zoning code that enhance aesthetics, that increase design requirements, and provides guidance that we continue to create requirements to increase aesthetics in the community, which is good in some ways, but in some ways, it's also overkill. The increased requirements could result in higher costs and higher prices for housing and apartments and even doing business. So what we would like is to have a consultant that would come out. They would take a look at that. They would have a lot of public engagement, engagement from the Planning Commission, engagement from the governing body, and the council members. And they would be able to identify, where do we want to go? Where do we want to take our action statements and our goals right now to right-size it and fit our community? In the budget presentation, I mentioned that there are seven foundations, 42 principles, and I think 145 action statements. Those are all items that we need to review and just come over and see what needs to stay and what needs to be revised.
Director Blum, I assume that Plan Cheyenne is not one of those plans that sits on a shelf that your department and, as well as the Planning Commission, probably does use it?
Mr. President, through to the council, yes, Plan Cheyenne is one that we use a lot. We use the transportation element almost daily because it is the one that classifies our different streets. It is what the MPO Policy Committee and the MPo's, one of their primary goals is, is to enforce. The Parks and Recreation Plan, that helps with our facilities. It identifies where we want to grow, where our policy, where our money should be invested, and what we need. This land use element, this sets the other goals. This could be any goal from zoning, increased density, change in building design, changes in landscaping, those types of items. Those are plans that we pick up and we reference in all of our staff reports related to zoning and related to development actions as to whether or not it conforms to the plan.
Thank you. I do have another question. I do have another question for you, but I will yield to the rest of the committee for the moment. We'll start on the far left, Councilman Escobal.
Okay. Mr. Chair, through you, Director. Last year, when we revised the UDC amendments, we got that through the Affordable Housing Task Force. Why can't we do that instead of a consultant?
Mr. President, through to, kind of Commissioner, Councilmember Escobal. That is, that's fair. As part of the Affordable Housing Task Force, that was established, as it was determined that was a community need to address housing. They set up goals, they essentially created their small, independent plan. It was a significant document. I mean, it had a bunch of strategies to proceed with. We use that as a document, just like we use our comprehensive plan, to go ahead and move forward with targeted amendments to help make housing more affordable for development, hopefully relaying those lower housing price points to the community. It could be, there could be an opportunity to do a similar type of group, that would review our comprehensive plan, the community plan. However, that would be very time-consuming, and I do not believe we'd have the bandwidth or the expertise to tackle that document, which is so broad, independent, without consultants.
Councilman Escobal, are you finished?
Yep.
Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie, through you to Director Bloom. You said that the current plan was done in 2014.
Mr. President, through you to Dr. Aldrich. That's correct.
President Rennie, through you. Are we required by law or obligated to follow that plan?
Director?
Mr. President, through to Dr. Aldrich. Whenever we make a decision regarding zoning, land use, policy, we're required to comply with the plan.
President Rennie, through you. As a follow-up question to Director Bloom, so there are pieces of that plan that were established in 2014, that you said we are not currently following. For instance, the desire to have businesses along residential arterial streets. So, we pick and choose which pieces we would like to follow?
Director?
Mr. President, through you to Dr. Aldrich. That's a fair point. At this point, we haven't had many requests for conversion of residential housing to businesses, but we have, along Central and Warren recently. And with those requests, and one of the elements we look at is the current comprehensive plan, and we do support it, one of those reasons being because it's in compliance with the plan.
Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Just a clarification, so what is required by law of this plan? You mentioned the transportation aspect, so we do have to do that, is that correct?
Director?
Mr. President, through you to Councilmember Moody. The only element, well, number one, we're required to have a master plan under state statute, and that's in three pieces right now: Parks and Recreation Plan, Community Plan, what we're discussing, and the Transportation Plan. By law, we're required every five years, and this is under the federal law, to update our transportation plan. The other ones, they honestly just have to be in existence to comply. Now, the other element with law is, our decisions are supposed to be based off of our policy documents. So, if someone challenges us for not following our policy, that's when we have a different type of scenario where we could end up in court, because we're not following our policy documents.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. And just one follow-up, back to the UDC. Do you want to tell the public what you, myself, you, and one of your coworkers has been doing with the UDC codes? Do you think that's sufficient with regards to our current plan?
Director?
Mr. President, through you to Councilmember Moody. Right now, we are meeting relatively frequently with Councilmember Moody, every couple of weeks or so, and we're discussing potential code amendments. Those code amendments that we are looking at right now are all ones that we do feel fit the criteria of the comprehensive plan, and are supportable. In addition, while we're making those recommendations, and we're making potential changes, and suggesting changes, we also look at the environment of the state and everything else that's around. So, right now, there is a desire to simplify processes, there's a desire to streamline processes, and to make things less complicated. Those things do, they are congruent with the plan right now.
Thank you.
Director, I have a question. Is the fact that, first of all, I assume we're updated on the transportation plan that has a five-year requirement, correct?
Mr. President, yes, and one should be adopted by the end of this year to stay in compliance.
Okay. The fact that we do not have a current plan that ours is at least 11 years old, does that have any impact when we're applying for any state or federal grants at all? I mean, would it affect us in that regard at all?
Mr. President, through to the members of the council. That's, that's not a clear question to answer. It could, in certain instances, where you may be applying for certain amounts of funding, where they're really looking for justification as to where does your community plan call this out. Other grants may not have the requirement, so I would say it's probably about a 50/50 chance. I do know that when Renee Smith does prepare grant applications, she will reach out to us to help find applicable action statements that support the cause.
Okay, all right. So, I guess I need to ask Renee, but potentially, if that affected grants, that could cost us more than the 250K. Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie, I just, I saw that earlier, we had some of our legislative representatives online, and I would just like to say that I find this to be one of those areas where the legislature mandates that we have this plan, yet it's an unfunded mandate. And the funding to update this, while we're criticized for having too much in reserve, it's things like this that are unfunded and mandated by their body, that cause us to have to have reserves to cover these types of expenses. So, I hope that they'll hear this loud and clear, that if they're going to mandate these things and be required, they need to fund them.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Bloom? Thank you, Director. Any other, this was supposed to be, some of this was supposed to be public comment, any other public comment on this item? On the amendment? No? All right. Discussion? Any further discussion from the council on the amendment to remove $235,000 from Professional Services, Planning and Development Division, and move that back into general fund reserves? Discussion? Discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Let me see the hands, the nose. Seigrae, Royball, Emmons, and White. So, the amendment fails.
President Rennie, looking at the time of the evening, and how long we've been at this, I'm going to save these amendments for the next opportunity to discuss the budget.
So, does that mean next Tuesday at council, or are you intending?
Yes.
Okay.
There may be some, the fourth as well.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Escobal?
Maybe for the treasurer, if we want to fund something that's a one-time funding, we use the general fund reserves for that?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Escobal. That is correct.
Okay. And we've discussed traffic, speeding, noises throughout the last, ever since I've been on council, probably ever since we had Model Ts going down the streets. So, in the overtime budget for police patrol, I would like to add $100,000 in overtime to address the, those issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Seigrae. So, the motion is to take $100,000 out of general fund reserves, moving the division of police patrol overtime. Any public input? Any public comment? No one in the room? Jennifer, any hands raised? No? All right. Yes, there is public comment. Mayor Collins?
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Escobal and the committee. Chief Francisco and I have been working on this project for a while now, and we started off using some of the salaries from some of our vacant positions, and running a few of the shifts. And then the thought was that we would, at the next reappropriation, ask for $100,000 to do this, but we can do it now, so either way, it doesn't matter. But I would just like to tell you, in the first 24 hours of work that we did, we pulled over 47 cars, gave 20 tickets, 11 speeding tickets, but most importantly, six of them for noise and equipment violations. So, the department is really focusing on the things that you guys have asked for. And if you remember correctly, we had testimony at our last meeting, where someone would get up at 7:30 in the morning and start their car and wake the whole neighborhood up. We asked a police officer to be waiting in that neighborhood, and when they got up, they got pulled over, and they will be required to do repairs to their vehicle to make it quieter. So, we are actually actively doing this right now. Every Friday and Saturday night, we're out, a couple nights during the week, we're out doing these kinds of patrols, and we can do it in the budget now, or we can do it at our first reappropriation. But I think it's a highly appropriate way for us to meet our city council goal, which was to quiet the city down and slow the speeds down.
Treasurer Lockman?
Yes, a point of clarification. So, are you wanting $100,000 plus benefits, or $100,000 including benefits? Because there's pension, FICA, workers' comp, things that are?
Councilman?
Then I'll amend it to include benefits.
Okay, we'll calculate that for you really quickly.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, that's fine, we're just clarifying what the motion was. Okay, the amendment is to take $100,000 out of general fund, add it to police overtime, which will include salary and benefits. On down, we'll start on the right wing this time. Councilman Seigrae.
Right wing? Wow. Thank you, I think. Mr. President, I did discuss, I seconded this, because I'd like to have the discussion. But I did speak with the mayor about this, maybe a week ago, and he had plans to do this in a reappropriation. Is there a significant difference whether we do it now or do it later? I just want to do what's best for staff and the easiest.
Treasurer?
It depends on when you want it to, if you want it to start now, in this fiscal year, then we need to do it in the reappropriation. If you want to wait until July, it would be next year.
Councilman Escobal, we are working on next year's budget, so I assume you wanted it to start in July. That answer your question, Mr. Seigrae?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I didn't know that the mayor was working on this, but great minds think alike, and the sooner the better. And I think that we need to send the message to our constituents that this council is putting their money where our mouth is. Or is it their money, or? Yeah, it's their money, you know? And this is one of those issues that they've been speaking very loudly about us taking care of, so I want them to see that we are addressing the problem.
Okay.
Financially.
Mr. President?
Mayor Collins?
Waiting for the budget may slow down our ability to, because I don't know we have enough money to get through the end of this fiscal year with what funding we had. And so, if we could do it as a reappropriation, then we'll be able to continue these patrols on Friday, Saturday night, up until July 1st, and then ongoing after that. So, it just may mean that we run out of money, have to stop for a while, and then restart them. But that's a policy decision you have to make.
Mayor, as I understand it, then, you already have thoughts of addressing this in the next budget, or the upcoming budget, but however, you may run out of money between now and the 1st of July. So, it's better to do a reappropriation and approve that at council, if we want to continue the program as it is, so then this motion is somewhat superfluous?
And Mr. President, as well, the mayor directed me to roll it over if it was approved by the council, so anything not spent in fiscal year '25, which is going to fiscal year '26.
Okay. Councilman Royball?
I just had a quick question on, with our combat on speed. The signs on Central and Warren, have they lowered the speeding, or incidence of speeding?
Mayor, can you address that?
Mr. Chairman, through you. I haven't got the final report yet, but I did talk to our city engineer. He's homesick this evening, so when they first went up, they definitely had a noticeable difference. But as we know from the studies, over time, people start to ignore them, but they were definitely effective. Now that we've redone our ordinance, we should have a meeting of that committee coming up very soon, and my hope would be that we'll designate that as a critical speed zone, and we'll give it a significant amount of enforcement to try to reinforce the slower speeds through that area.
Okay, thank you.
Treasurer Lockman, you have your light on. Is it, okay. So, Mayor, if I understand it, you've already made an attempt to address this in the next budget, and really, when you need help is before the end of this budget, so is this amendment really needed at this point? And more importantly, we do need a reappropriation?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the committee, you know, I heard loud and clear at our budget, our work session, where we talked about goals, that this was important. And so, we've been working on getting officers out and doing this. And I think, it doesn't really matter how we do it, it's just, if we do advise a reappropriation, we can continue to, when we run out of the other money, fund this up until the start of the new budget. So, that would be my preference, but, you know, it's loud and clear, Mr. Escobal, we know this needs to be done, and, you know, I don't know if $100,000 will get us through the whole year. We may have to come back and ask you for more money, but we need to quiet the cars down, that's what we heard. We need to find ways to slow the speeds down, so that the community is safer, and that's the commitment that I have from the chief to work on that.
Okay, so, that it's clear to all of us, with this amendment, it takes care of, at least, how far it'll go next year, do you have? Was your intention to use the same process, assuming we don't have, we haven't filled all our positions to use those salaries until we run out of those, and then reappropriate at that time?
Mr. President, through you, my preference would be not to pass this amendment, because we'll use a reappropriation, put $100,000 in the account, just as Mr. Escobal has asked. So, that way, when we run out of the dollars that we need, we'll have money readily available to do it.
And what isn't spent of the reappropriation will be rolled over into next year?
Correct, and it'll go into next year's budget, starting July 1st. And then, if in fact, we find that this kind of pilot program is successful, and we're making a difference, and we run out of money, then we'll come back and ask you again for more money.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie, through you. I just wanted to respond to Councilman Royball. I did have an email exchange with Rick Eamon, who is our traffic engineer this week, about those two lights on, or the flashing lights on Central and on Warren, because we had had a request for speed limit signs to be placed either above or below those, so that people would know, even though it flashes their current speed, what the speed's supposed to be. And he explained to me that those actually are not permanently installed, they're temporarily installed, and that they were installed in such a way that there's not enough room to place a speed limit sign either above or below them. So, that was some of the challenge that was going on, but I'm not sure that they are meant to be permanent, that they may be moved around at some point. And I think part of that is addressed by what Mayor Collins said, with that it becomes the refrigerator blindness, people just quit seeing it, so.
Mayor?
Mr. President, Dr. Aldrich is exactly right. We knew from doing the studies, or reading the studies on these kind of flashing lights, they have a very good effect for a short period of time. And then, like you say, what you call it, the refrigerator effect?
Refrigerator.
You don't see it anymore, and so that was why we bought them, to be modular, so we can move them around the community, and hopefully make a difference.
Councilman Seigrae?
President Rennie, I would argue in favor of this amendment. We have about five weeks left until the new budget starts. Even if we wanted to do a reappropriation right now, it would take?
Takes two weeks.
Would take, well, you'd have to submit it next Monday, and then wait two weeks to approve it, so, or next Tuesday, because of the holiday. So, we would be into the first week of June before we could reappropriate anything, and then this budget starts the 1st of July. So, I would say, let's support this amendment, and if we do need to do a reappropriation to get from now until the 1st of July, five weeks? to get from now until the 1st of July, five weeks, we can do that. So I'm still going to argue in support of this. Thank you.
Treasurer Lockman.
I just, excuse me. I just have the totals between salary and benefits for one thing. So it'd be $80,392 for the actual overtime and then $19,608 for benefits.
Thank you.
And then also to Mr. Seigraev's point, we have enough money in the police department budget where, right now, where we could use other money to do this, to gap it until the council approves it later. And the next reappropriation won't be done until August. But it's for fiscal year '25, so.
Okay.
Point of clarification.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
President Rennie, as a point of clarification, I understood it that if we pass this amendment, that there is a possibility there would be a gap. And if we don't, if we vote no on this amendment, that we would actually have more continuous service through this process because it would allow us to do it through reappropriation. So it's actually would be continuous service and consistent service throughout those summer months when probably this is even more important by voting no on this amendment and allowing the reappropriation process to work as planned.
Is that accurate?
Mr. President, through you, you know, my plan was is to continue to run the patrols. And if we run short of money, we'll just ask to be reimbursed through the reappropriation process because I don't want to have any sort of delays. What I've seen from the productivity of the police department in this area so far is really good. And I just want to continue to do that.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilman Seigraev.
I'm arguing in favor of both. Making this a permanent part of the new year budget. But if we need to do a reappropriation to get us from here to there, we can do that. We may not have to. But I'd like to make it a formal part of the budget, put it in there, let everybody see it. I think that's what we're supposed to do.
It would just be a smaller amount that we'd reappropriate, and that would work just fine also.
Okay. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Yeah, I would say I support my colleague down at the far, far end from War II. Let's just do it that way. And then, right, I apologize, and getting late. And again, just know that we are a law and order community. We do support our police department, knowing that we do support our officers, unlike Denver, San Francisco, Chicago, where we've seen potential cuts to it. We're not going to do that here in Cheyenne. Pretty sure everybody agrees that here on the dais. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Aldrich. Further discussion? Further discussion? Okay, the amendment is, jeez, oh, to take $100,000 out of general reserves and add it to the police division overtime, which includes salaries and benefits for the 2026 budget.
President, that would be specifically for speed and noise enforcement, correct?
That was the intent, Mayor. Treasurer.
Mr. President, would you like a separate line item for this money? Or do you want to put it into the overtime line item?
I think the motion was it goes into the overtime line item. And the administration understands what our priorities are.
It just might be easier for reporting where you can see it that way. But I can do whatever is your pleasure.
Then if it's easier for you, then go ahead and do it separately.
A point of information.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
President Rennie, my understanding, how I heard the motion, was that it was $100,000 and that was to, that was, we wanted $100,000 for the enforcement and then adding additionally the amount that would be needed for benefits and things. And what Treasurer Lockman gave us was $80,000 in wages and some odd cents. And then $19,000 in benefits. So is it the $100,000?
The maker of the motion, my understanding from the maker of the motion was it was $100,000 total.
You said plus benefits, so.
The benefits were included.
Mr. President, I have to include benefits.
That's what I recall. And we'll get a separate line item on that, then. Okay. Again, the motion is to take $100,000 out of reserves. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is, the amendment is adopted. Any other council members besides Councilwoman Aldrich have further amendments? Councilwoman Aldrich, you said you had 11. We've only done three or four, so does that mean you have seven or eight remaining?
I do.
Well, I'd prefer to go a little bit longer tonight because if you tack those on to a full agenda on Tuesday, we will be here much longer.
President Rennie, on line, on page 101, there is a, an amount for memorials and trophy supplies of $1,200. And I would like to move, to amend that to $600, with the remaining going back to the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment? Mayor.
Mr. President, through you to the committee, those are the dollars that we use to present plaques and for employees who've worked for the community for 20, 25, 30 years. Holly buys those, makes them, and we present those to our employees who've worked for the city for a significant period of time to give them something tangible for their service.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other public comment? Public comment? Hearing none, discussion. Councilwoman Aldrich.
President Rennie, I just, I guess one of my thoughts and concerns is is that in 2023, the actual amount was $512. In 2024, it jumped to $1,500. We have it now at $1,200. Is there really a calculation? Do we know how many employees are going to hit those milestones during 2026? Or is this just a number that's been selected? And have we actually utilized all of the $2025 amount?
Mayor.
Mr. President, through you to Dr. Aldridge. I think I've done three of these maybe in the last month. And Holly just does a running average of what she thinks that number is going to be. And I don't know how scientific it is, Dr. Aldridge. But as you can see, in 2024, we did $1,500 worth. We have a large, surprisingly large number of employees who make it 2025, 30, 35, even 40 years working for the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Seigraev.
Just a quick question, Mr. President. If the full $1,200 is not consumed or used, would it return to the general fund at the end of the year?
Mayor.
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Seigraev, if we don't spend the money, it does return to reserves automatically.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Treasurer Lockman.
To answer Dr. Aldridge's question, we have spent $452.80 so far this fiscal year.
Okay. Any other public comment? Public comment? Hearing none, discussion? Discussion? Okay, the motion is to take $600 from memorials and trophy supplies from the mayor's division and revert them back to general fund reserves. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Opposition, I presume, Seigraev, Royball, Emmons, Escobell, and White, the amendment fails. Councilwoman.
President Rennie, through you, or to you, I'm just going to call it a night and finish these next week. Thank you. Oh, he has something.
I just have one.
Mr. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. On page 178, line item Arch Cheyenne. So it's the very last one, above toe expenditures. I motion to remove that, the entire $50,000, and put that back in the general fund.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I will second it for the sake of discussion.
Second by Aldridge. Mr. Mayor or Treasurer Lockman, I have a question. Community support is generally, is that set under fifth or sixth penny or by contract? Or is it just we decide in our budget? Treasurer Lockman.
Mr. President, it's just decided tonight, or through this process.
Thank you. All right, the motion is to remove the $50,000 from Arch Cheyenne under community support and put that back into the general fund reserves. Any public comment? Public comment? Mayor.
Mr. President, through you to the committee, the majority of that money, of that $50,000, at least half of it, goes to taking care of the maintenance of our art in public places, specifically like the, what, 70-some bronzes that we have now. So that's part of the contract we have. We don't have anybody to do the maintenance on those types of art projects that we have within this community. And so when the director was here and they talked about the work that they do, that was one of the things that I thought was important. We've got more than $2 million worth of art that's been donated to the city. And we have a responsibility to do the maintenance on those. And apparently there's, you have to rub them down with, I don't know if it's a wax or whatever you have to do as part of that maintenance. Or when they break off the QR codes and things, Arch Cheyenne is the part of, is the group that we have that helps take care of that process, if that helps the community.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other public comment? Hearing no public comment. Councilman Moody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The reason I brought this up is because in Article 16, Section 6 of the Wyoming Constitution, under loan of credit, donations prohibited, work of internal improvement, in A, it says neither the state or any county, city, township, town, school district, or any other political subdivision shall loan or give its credit or make donations to or in aid of any individual, association, or corporation except for necessary support of the poor. And the other ones do support people in poverty. That's why I was asking that question. But Arch Cheyenne, from my hearing, does not do that. And if we do have with the bronze statues, I would say bring the DDA in it. So that's why I'm looking at that as not the place of government for the arts. Again, the other ones, that does help the poor. And those are great aspects there, but this one is not. And from what I'm reading, it violates the Wyoming Constitution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I think this is more of a contract for service. We're not giving them money just because we're feeling good about it. We're asking them to provide a service for the community. If they don't do it, we're going to have to pay somebody else to do that, another company or an employee of the city. So I don't see that hiring somebody as a service is a violation of the Constitution. We do it all the time. The things that we buy, we buy computers, we buy a lot of different services. Like with the Plan Cheyenne Plan, you know, the consultants, we're buying a service. We're not giving them money because we feel good about them or to make them feel good. We're actually asking them to provide a service for the community.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Seigraev.
I wondered if we could get a legal opinion on what we just heard. If I recall and heard it correctly, I believe the language was "shall." It doesn't say we can't. It just says you "shall." So could we have an opinion on that, on that verbiage?
Attorney Brody, do you?
And I realize you haven't had, anyone's had a chance to look at it.
Render an opinion tonight?
Mr. President, John Brody, City Attorney. So when it comes to the donation clause into the Wyoming Constitution, it's a two-factor test. There has to be a public purpose and then there has to be adequate consideration. So I do hesitate to give a legal opinion from the hip on a program that I haven't really been asked to examine. I guess what I can say from a general perspective is that, you know, the bronzes do provide a public purpose, or an argument can be made that a public purpose is present. And then the consideration element could be addressed through the fact that but for our willingness to aid in the maintenance and preservation of these bronzes, that they wouldn't be in the community. But it's a fact and circumstance analysis, so I'd have to look in more detail to give you a real opinion.
Mr. President, a follow-up.
Councilman.
Since I now have the document in front of me, it says, "None of these entities shall loan or give its credit." We're not loaning, we're giving our credit, are we? For the preservation of this art?
Mr. President, Councilman Seigraev, no, I would agree. I think the real crux of the analysis is whether or not this arrangement constitutes a donation of public funds.
And that was the next thing, we're making a donation. I don't think we're donating to... Anyway, it says loan, give credit, or make donations, or aid any individual, association, or corporation. I'm not, I don't think we're doing any of those three, personally, in my opinion. Thank you. Non-legal opinion.
Thank you, Council. Any other further questions for Council? Thank you, Councilor. Mayor, do we have an MOU with them?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so then it really is a contract. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Aldrich.
President Rennie, that was going to be my comment. I actually believe that I sponsored that MOU contract when it came before this body a couple of years ago. And Desiree Brothe, the director of Arch Cheyenne, was on earlier. I don't see her still on. But this is, there were two parts to this. One was that we have a lot of money invested in bronzes and that the maintenance of those is beyond what we can expect our community wrecking events, folks are safe and clean crew downtown to take care of. And the second piece was actually a project that developed and QR-coded every piece of art, public art, that is in the community. And that group had started that, there had been a group that started that project. And some of you may remember that there was a lot of discussion about that this was happening all during the beginnings of COVID. And they hadn't been able to finish that project. So Arch Cheyenne actually came in and picked up the remainder of that project and has maintained that. So this is definitely, the MOU that we have with them is for providing services as well as public art. But for that reason, and because I think that art does add to our community, and I would argue that it does benefit our low-income residents and those that are marginalized, because a lot of times they don't have the funding to pay $10 or $12 to go to a local museum, the Nelson Museum, or to the Old West Museum. The place where they access art is on our public streets. And so for that reason, I will be a no vote on this amendment.
Further discussion? Councilman Moody.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'll just further argue, I just don't think government should be in the business of the arts. Again, alcohol receiving center, absolutely. Again, the senior service, absolutely. I just don't think government should be in the business of arts anywhere. Thank you.
Further discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
The amendment fails. Any further discussion on the budget tonight? Discussion? Discussion on the budget. All right. The motion before us is to adopt the 2026 budget or recommend to the council that we adopt the 2026 budget. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Councilwoman Aldrich is a no. The recommendation to council will be to approve or adopt on second.
As amended.
As with one amendment. Thank you, everybody. Michelle.
Yes, sir.
So, why do we want to, why do we want to go through seven more on Monday, on Tuesday night? Because we'll go much later.
Well, I think people have had about what they can take tonight.